Advertising guys adults. We haven't booked our tickets yet, so.
Okay, so it is uh ten AM on Friday the thirteenth of January twenty twenty-three. Special meeting of the Water Valley Select Board. And we have just a few items to roll through. Um Rich Rita, the Chair with us today is Margaret Turner, the Vice Chair and Bob Fries. Select Board Member, so we have a quorum. Shall we dispose of the fourth quarter water and sewer warrant?
Yeah, so you've seen, and just if we can have a vote to make it official, we'll. We'll get those bills in.
I will uh. I will motion to accept the fourth quarter water and sewer warrant as presented to the board this morning. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark, is this the one where the increase for show?
Uh, the increase was already in effect, but but it did budget wise, it came. Very close to our budgeted numbers, just for water and sewer, just slightly, and trash slightly.
Was that pretty much the last thing you needed before the thirty-one January report, budget report?
Thirty-one December.
Yeah, thirty-one December, but I think it's.
That was the last thing.
The end of January.
This this billing gets booked as the fourth billing for twenty twenty-two.
Good okay.
So this completes our revenue numbers.
Great.
And I can provide that. Final summary report.
Right, that's what I was asking about on the twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Great, okay. So let's turn to the second item on the agenda, town election and meeting location. Uh, we have with us today Patty Fergo, the town town moderator. And uh. The board wanted to um. Update. Uh Patty and and anyone else uh involved with the election on a complication that's arisen. Um with regard to the venue of the election. And uh the polling venue and the um. Uh business sessions and public hearings. So uh. As all of us will remember, since it was only a few days ago, we uh we met and based on our discussion with uh. The school board, uh and they uh. And their rejection of our request to use the. The gymnasium for a polling, uh the polling part of uh. March fourteenth uh. Election, uh we decided to look for an outside venue. Uh for everything, since we we we're really fundamentally operating, and I come back to this two. Two fundamental principles, we want to keep everything in the same place, whether it's a public hearing. A business session or an election. And um. That kind of drives us in in a certain direction and and we want to do it in a way, especially when we have the business. Business session and the town election on the fourteenth, want to be able to do it in a way that it's doable for the poll workers without. A lot of uh, a lot of uh. Movement and uh. And difficulty, uh it's best to be in the same place, since those people have to also. Also who handle the election have to deal with have duties in the in the business session as well. So uh what has occurred is that uh we decided to go to the. Conference Center. And uh so. After the meeting, uh the town manager alerted town staff as to the decision. And was informed and therefore informed the. Select Board that the code enforcement officer does not recommend that we. That we uh sign a contract or schedule a meeting with the conference center due to a code enforcement issue that is ongoing. So uh when we heard that, uh I had asked Mark to check out other venues and that other venue that came to mind right away. Was the tennis center, and I think Mark, we talked to Tom and Tom Gross and.
They would prefer not to do it there, but.
Sort of a.
You know, they said.
Venue of last resort.
That's correct, so they said, but we will have to cover the floor, there's a lot of additional costs that. Would have to go into that.
Right, that we would bear. Right, it's not simply. Simply, obviously, uh renting a a room, it's it'd take a lot of setup.
Yeah, and there's a lot of work uh associated with that.
There'd be a cost, a fee as well?
Yeah, there would be, they already have business booked in there, they can move it around, but we would need to compensate them.
Yeah, this is all predicated on market rate, so that we're, we don't uh have the perception of. Of uh. Taking a favor. Unso influenced, thank you, potential undue influence.
Yeah.
Perception of potential undue influence, how's that?
I've said to several people who asked about that concept, I said. Even if we ended up not paying that money. And we decided to barter with the organization, we ought to know what the value is that we received. In in exchange for whatever.
That's that's another way of approaching it, of course, a barter, but some way to to that. As you say, it's known what the value of the of the thing is that the board has been given or bartered for or purchased. So in any event, um obviously with those two venues, uh situation with those two venues puts us in a bit of a bind now. I want to go back to the comment. I made just the very beginning is. What is driving us? I mean, looking at in terms of fundamental principles, we're trying to keep everything together. And we're trying to uh make it a a a burden on the poll workers, that's not an undue burden, frankly. We can rethink some of these fundamental approaches. One thing we could do is 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 back off from trying to keep everything in the same place. As I recall, the Chair of the School Board said they had no difficulty with any of the public hearing or business sessions in the gymnasium, since they would occur. And when school was not in session, so we can, we could move all of that activity. Uh presumably to the to the gymnasium, and then we just have to find a place. To for the for the polls, but it would be different and we'd have to work around getting. People there and uh making sure people understand it's a different place. Another alternative would be to move everything except that one day. To the gymnasium and then finding a place for that one day for the business session and the and. And the um. And the election, so I just wanted to throw that on the table, some other alternatives.
The only complication to doing everything one day, so doing the polls on Tuesday. And doing everything else on another day. Um is that you can't do that until the town has given us authority to do it. So the town actually.
It has one option, right, if everything, right.
So bifurcated meeting.
Yeah.
Needs to be approved, we have never done that as a community, so we we can put a warrant article on.
At least give us the.
To give the board the flexibility to be able to do that. So the Tuesday voting and a Saturday deliberative session, that needs to be voted on. Really, so, yeah, so. So number one question, do we want to put that on to give us the flexibility in the future, so? That's a pretty easy thing, they give us the wording in statute. And we can just add it, it it is actually part of the official ballot, so it would be at the polls, so. Um but for this year, we have to at least start and conduct some business. In the deliberative session on Tuesday, don't have to complete it. Um but we we do have to start it, it can be in a different location. Uh but it has to happen on Tuesday, so.
Um what time? I mean, we were trying to make the the school board deliberative session and ours start at the same time as six o'clock.
They were.
They they have been at six.
We so so if we had our voting until five o'clock, that would give an hour.
To move.
To move instead of, you know, that we usually have a half hour between a session, so at least we would have an hour. Yeah.
So that really all we have to find then is a place for the.
Yep.
For the voting on on that day, and then just do everything else.
So we contacted BBTS.
Mm-hmm.
Asked them about their big conference room. However, they use that for school and school is in session on March fourteen. But Sharon went over uh and talked to Tori and Anne Marie and we could use the training center. Uh it's close to the parking lot, it has handicapped access. Um it is. It it's plenty big enough, we just moved some equipment out. To the walls. And the whole center section is usable, it has an an entrance and an exit that are separate and opposite. So the flow could be set up pretty easy for the polls. Uh and there's.
Isn't the floor, don't they have built-in trampolines, is that?
But they have a way to cover them, so that.
Yeah, that would be even.
Right, no, I'll be on, but but um so Sharon, Sharon can answer some.
Over and spoke to them, and I have on my phone from last year. But the trampoline that you said Patty, the the um. The patties that they have on the floor for just um whatever gymnastics and such that they do would be moved over where the trampolines are, so. Or in their in-ground tramps. So from that point, the remainder of the room, which is basically like three quarters of the room would be available for.
Okay.
And and it's much larger than this space for that area available is much larger than it is.
Did we verify internet connectivity?
I did not.
Well, we we don't need to provide the um. The telephone access that we usually do, do you need internet? Availability there?
We would need it for the supervisor. The supervisors would prefer it, would, yeah.
No, we can set up a hotspot, we have, we have a couple of mobile hotspots hotspots uh in public safety. And we can get, we can get another one if we need to. So I I don't think. I don't think that that will be an issue.
Okay.
Uh I think we have good cell service in that part of town, so. Um but we can, we can look at the hotspot.
Yeah, I'd be surprised, they don't have. But the school and everything.
I know they do on the other side.
Well, it's whether or not that particular.
Location, right.
They do have a meeting room upstairs, like a little office.
Right, so they probably.
Have it in.
Yeah.
You know, hard bargain.
Well, we can, we can check.
Double check that, so. I mean, it does seem that that would be a good solution for this year, uh it would be. Different in that we're in a different place, but.
What about the room that we used by the post office?
Well, that would be up to Patty, there are two doors there, you could have people come, the meeting room, the one beside the post office. Could come in, go up, vote at the back of the room and come back down and exit through the other door.
Yeah, we could arrange the flow to go around.
That would seem to make some sense to me, since everybody goes to the post office.
Yeah.
It's a good place, yeah, is there room for observers, I mean, it's just a question of room.
Well, there are no legal requirements for observers or any of that for town.
For town, that makes it much easier than.
Non-partisan.
Right.
Yeah, there's no.
Of course, that's right, it's a nonpartisan election.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that people are used to, because we used it all last all last year and. Rather than create someplace that's totally new.
Yeah, I mean, it would be more walking for people to get there.
Well, the parking lot might be fairly full at the, yeah, BBTS too. Might, you might have to.
No, no, it could be, I mean, I'm just saying, it's a, it's definitely a bit of a walk.
Hmm.
And this have handicap access via the elevator, but it would still be. A bit of a, a bit of a walk from the parking area.
They do have some tables and chairs in there already.
Yeah.
So I mean, there are pluses and minuses to to both.
Yeah, I mean, we could check availability if you want to prioritize the meeting room as the first choice.
That'd be, that'd be my first choice. I also, I I think this room we were, but I I mean, I was at the polls last time. I mean, you might have three or four people at the same time, but that's about the max that you ever have at one time.
Right. You need two entrances. We don't actually.
We don't need a mid-side thing.
With COVID, it was, you know, we wanted flow, uh we didn't want people overlapping, but with. Uh there's no requirements and we could set up the flow.
I think the issue here, though, may be if, how many people we can have in there and would they be waiting out in?
That's what I'm saying.
I doubt it.
No, no, I do doubt it too, but I just think I'm got all the.
If it's cold.
Yeah, oh no, I'm talking about in here, I'm talking about here.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the area, the place next to the post office.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I don't think that's a problem, no, that's covered area.
I think that's a good solution, because everybody goes and gets their mail.
Yeah.
Alright, so meeting room first choice.
I think that makes, I think that makes sense.
The meeting room being.
But we were holding our uh meetings this summer because this room was unavailable, that end room. In Town Square.
Yep. Yep, that works for me, this works for me, they all work for me.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll do that as a first.
See if it's available and. Get the cost.
It's a little closer to the gymnasium.
Hmm, yeah.
Um.
And then everything else.
At the.
Budget hearings.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, school in town and the deliberative sessions. So there'll be a setup and teardown that the school will have to do on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
And then the town will have to go back in and. The afternoon and set up again for.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the.
And for Monday, for the school.
Well, they'll, they'll, the school district will have to do that, because it's gonna have to be, I assume, it'll have to be. Horned down after their meeting on Monday night.
Right. Do we still have our AV people?
I hope so. And that's going to be the other thing, if you could check with the school to see. Because the AV guy is not going to want to tear everything down at eight o'clock on Monday night and set it back up at noon on.
The next day or.
Tuesday, yeah, yeah. So.
And remember, there may be a possibility.
And there may be a possibility of Wednesday.
Day or Saturday, whatever day, whatever day.
Whatever day.
How about the public hearings?
Well, the public hearings. It depends on how much you want those to be available. Outside, because we can use our regular. Uh projector and small screen.
But where will we have them?
Well, we would want to have them at the gym.
Yep.
And do them at the same place where the deliberative session is going to be.
Yeah, I think that'd be. Minimize the minimize the change of venue as much as possible, just so I event.
I don't know what the school board has set as their. Hearing date, but ours is going to be on the eighth.
I think they said the sixth.
The sixth, it it usually is that first Monday, so. So sixth and eighth, and those wouldn't have any extensions, those would be just those two nights.
You could also zoom.
Uh you can't, if they, those allowances are no longer in effect. I mean, that that's my question to you, how much do you want them? To be available to remote. Participation, because.
Well, I I I wasn't suggesting, I know that you can't do remote participation, but you can do remote viewing.
Yes, yes, but in order.
People need to understand that if they want to vote, they have to be in the room.
Yes, and but it is not going to be, if if we don't have New Hampshire audio visual there. Which I was not planning to do for the hearings.
Mm-hmm, we do have budgets there.
We do have a budget for it, okay, he can be there. Can he be there for two nights?
Got to confirm.
Monday and Wednesday, in February.
And for the town.
Okay, but is he going to be allowed to leave it set up? Or for three days? Yeah, that's gonna, I mean, we're gonna have to check with him to see if he can do that and check with the school.
Yeah.
But. That's the only way to get. Um really uh good quality. Audio visual.
If we want to stream.
If if you want to stream it and if you want. People to be able to hear it. Uh it's gonna.
Or view it later.
Or view it later.
Okay, well, I think we should still. Do we have any idea how many people viewed it last year?
Well, would you like to do it, I mean. Yeah, the the audio was un-un-understand, not understandable. We could do the audio visual. For, no, we could do it for the hearings, which would give us a good. Um quality copy that people could listen to later. And then town meeting, because people need to be there. Anyway, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do town meeting just, or the deliberative sessions for the school and the town. Just us. Because you don't have to record that. Um, you know, for viewing later. I think it's more important to get that budget hearing information down, so that people can look at it between February and March. I don't know how you guys feel about that. Or do you think it's more important for them to see town meeting, or do you want them to see both?
I think it's. Trying to understand, we're not allowed to stream public hearings.
No, we are, people, but you can't hold the hearing, it doesn't count as a.
Right.
Legal.
So you have to be, yeah, so we would be there in person, but but what I was talking about was zooming it, so.
And and we could do that if if New Hampshire audio visual is there. It's going to take an outside.
We do it here.
Just numbers of people. We're gonna, we're gonna have, I would anticipate seventy or eighty people at least. Yeah, we had seventy, yeah.
At the deliberative session?
No, at the hearing, oh really, the budget and bond hearing.
Yeah.
And to, what we built into the budget that we're hoping gets approved in March is for four. Audio visual sessions through the vendor that we used last year. I planned for the schools meeting. I planned for the budget hearing and I planned for bifurcated town deliberative session. So there's money for four sessions if we so choose to use the AV vendor.
My input is the budget hearing is more important. So that people can be prepared going into town meeting, so if they can't attend the budget hearing to be able to watch it. Um. And then go in prepared to town meeting.
Yeah, I agree. If we're, if we're not going to do all four.
And then the town meeting, as far as the audio visual assistance is, we get a much better product that people can see the screen and. Hear people's comments, it's just better, I mean, I I like having it there for as many. As we want to do.
I mean, I'd opt for the full package myself, but it doesn't, we don't have to.
That's fine, yeah, we budgeted for it, so. So I think we do all of it. It'll certainly help us, you know, from being able to present the information, so.
Okay, so we just need to check with the school board to make sure this is all.
Still okay.
Okay, still okay, and.
And that the rooms are available for the voting.
And then we'll check with Town Square to see if the meeting room is. Available on fourteen.
We'll probably, what do you need it the day before?
Yeah, I mean. You're not going to be in there until noon, so if it's not available on the thirteenth, it's not a big deal, but if we can get in there in the afternoon, it's better.
Right.
There will be some issue with making sure in the transfer, right, I won't be able to clean up everything, because you guys are going to need to get.
Oh, yeah, 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 they'll need.
With the ballots in particular.
The thirteenth to the sixteenth would be, or thirteenth to the fifteenth.
Yeah, my thing on the control of the ballots.
Because then, well, the control of the ballots, you can carry the ballot box.
Right, there's no, there's, we don't have to. Scrap it in a box and all of you have to sign, you know, right, not for this election, so.
Next year we have four.
Right, next year.
We.
Well, we probably need to talk about that as early in the fall as we can, because we need.
I think we need to, I think we need to set aside a little separate discussion about how we're going to handle.
Later in the year, let's see if anything comes out of the legislative session that changes our requirements.
Yeah.
They're going to be setting the date for the, for the primaries.
Yes.
Right, and that's a big legislative discussion that's going to be going on, so I think.
Two primary.
By July or August or September, somewhere in there. Will know exactly what we're going to be required to do.
Mm-hmm.
We, yeah, get together a little separate.
Yeah. Yeah.
Twenty twenty-four election.
So eleven to five for the.
That's fine.
Eleven to five is good, so that's, that'll help town council feel better.
All the evening sessions will be at six.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to keep that consistent, right?
And right now there are four with the potential for five evening sessions. Pub, two public hearings. One one for us, one for school.
February ones, right, right, yes.
And then the.
All of them will start at six.
Six o'clock.
Okay.
But four with a potential of five.
Correct. And then the question, do you, do you want the question to be on the ballot? Because what what it says is, do you approve of having two sessions for the annual town meeting in this town? The first session for a choice of town officers elected, geez, I have copies. The uh. The um so it's in the middle of the paragraph, you approve of having two sessions for the annual town meeting. In this town, the first session for choice of town officers elected by an official ballot. And other action required to be inserted on said official ballot. And the second session on a date set by the selectman for a transaction of other business.
It doesn't lock us in.
It doesn't lock you into any particular.
Into having to do it.
Could do it on the same.
You can do it on the same day, but you would take a vote every year when that was going to happen. And this would give you the ability to completely separate.
Right, so it's not a full SB two town.
Yes, I, and I, I really. You know, the SB two towns.
You may want to explain for the.
So SB two just mean it's an official ballot town meeting instead of traditional town meeting. So you have a deliberative session where all the amendments are made. To the warrant articles, you go through the entire warrant, just like you were doing a traditional meeting, you make all the amendments. And you have all of the discussion, the only thing you don't do is vote. And then on to the second, and you do that prior to the second Tuesday of March. And then you have your second Tuesday of March meeting and everything gets voted. On the ballot, including all of the warrant articles. That were deliberative.
It's all written.
Everything is written down.
The officers, the zoning amendments, everything.
Well, no, every.
Every, the warrant. Right, it's all done.
So that's an SB two town, let's say. I think it makes it more complicated, I I think that people get confused about when they're supposed to show up to to. Deliberate, um but some people are more comfortable going into the ballot box or into the polls and. Checking off each of them.
Which we can do anywhere, it just takes what, five people or? If the call for.
Right, if there's a call for for a.
On any, on any warrant article.
Five, I think it takes.
Right now, you can have an absentee ballot. If you're not in town that day and you can vote, but only for what's on the ballot, you can't vote for any of the warrant articles that got money that.
You gotta be there.
An SB two town would put everything on the ballot.
Yeah.
Along with the offices.
Oh, I see, so it would be, that's interesting.
Yeah.
I didn't pick that up, so that an absentee voter could vote on.
For everything.
For everything. Interesting.
Um.
But this doesn't, this doesn't push us in that, it was just giving us.
Just allows you.
That's a whole nother vote from the town.
Without attending the deliberatives.
Yeah, you cannot attend the deliberative session and then go in.
Just just get your registered voter, get your ballot, I guess, yeah.
And this whole verbiage would have to be on the warrant.
This, no, just this this little piece that I.
And we can explain that, it's just to give us. Give the select board. Flexibility in twenty twenty-four, which is going to be a busy year. With four elections and uh. As well as deliberative, I mean, we've had it before, we've done it before, but. Maybe the first one. Post-COVID. We've had this many, right? Anyway, it doesn't matter.
My last years. You had primaries and everything else. In town meeting.
Well, we have the presidential primary, this.
Well, that's right, so we have the full, it's one.
We have the full four.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like this, doesn't have to do this, gives us flexibility.
Yeah. Okay, so do you need us to vote to advance that as a warrant?
I'll add it to the list, then you'll be able to vote.
Thirty, whatever. Yeah, can we hit, can we hit forty, anyone working?
But this one could be on the ballot.
It will be.
This one would be on the ballot.
But it'll be a separate question on the warrant, but it'll be voted on when they're electing officials.
So it wouldn't lengthen the town meeting.
No, okay, that's true, yeah.
Right, it'd be along with the zoning amendments, it's on, it'd be one of those. Measures, got it.
People may not understand what it means.
Well, we'll have to.
We'll have to explain.
Explain it, at the budget hearing and talk, yeah. With the budget hearing and toss, yeah. Maybe that would be a good. Is it time to get a good uh wig wag article out, which just mentions what we're doing? It's a possibility.
Yeah, it's really too late for February, don't even get it done in February. Uh what I was doing was waiting until the February budget hearing and finalizing everything. Then I was gonna do a, an article for the week.
Though for the March would be better.
Out on one month.
Yeah, that'd be better because it'd be a couple of weeks away and we could explain this.
Town report and when it's gonna be available.
All right, that seemed like a a reasonable course of action, given the situation we have for this year and then.
So Steve, Steve can follow up with Patty as soon as we make sure that the meeting room is available. And then we can have a meeting of the staff and your folks whenever you would like.
Yep.
Um and then as soon as we finish with the hearing, they'll vote on the final warrant. Then you and I can sit down and go over the script and prepare that document. There's a couple of really long warrant articles that I'm gonna talk to town council about how to make motions that are.
Small, yeah, good.
More simple.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Good, good, and and the fallback is BBTS, just for the.
And the fallback is.
BBTS for the record.
Well, yeah, we'll find some other place. Try and keep it.
Yeah, I like all those suggestions, so.
Yeah, cuz down here is a possibility and.
Okay, all right, whatever's reasonable.
So last couple of elections, there were about a hundred and fifty ballots. Was that including absentee ballots, Steve? Do you know?
The figures you gave inclusive of absentee ballots.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not a lot of people.
Yeah, well, I I would anticipate probably absentee ballots are less at town meeting than they are. A general election.
Yeah, I think that's generally, just generally. Yeah. There may be fewer people voting, but we get, we may get more people at town meeting at the business session.
Right, right, that's what people come up for the business session.
Right.
And Patty, do you think we'll leave that room three thirteen, three fourteen and three fifteen?
We'll set up and take down though.
Yeah, cuz these guys are gonna have to scoop.
Right, they're gonna have to leave and I just don't know if if DPW can get our stuff. The, you know, the actual voting.
Um, yeah, we won't really need a three thirteen unless the if the town spokes. No, this is for the ballot.
For the poll.
We won't, unless if the town spokes that are gonna be delivering the stuff can do it that morning.
Yeah.
Well, before eleven, like around nine, we won't be there the day before.
Okay, I mean, I'm, it seems to me, I mean, if we're not talking an additional large amount of money, who know, I mean, that morning. The weather could be crappy or something.
We'll.
Do the three days, just block it out for the three, that'd be my suggestion, block it out for the three days.
Yes.
And.
It was booked on the thirteenth.
We can probably, but see if we can get the full three days and I I can't imagine the cost is gonna be that much.
Different.
Different for a three day, will be that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Monday, this is for what?
The election, the the polling.
The polling on Tuesday.
The polls.
Yes. So what, why do we need three days?
We'll set up and take.
Oh, guys.
For for over at the.
I mean, DPW can probably do it that same day, but.
But who knows, if they're out plowing or something.
And they have a lot of town meetings, so.
Yeah. All right, so I think we've come to a very reasonable.
Yep.
And agreeable. Course of action this year.
Yep.
All right.
We will need to update election net, Sharon, with the poll location.
Well, once we decide, yeah.
Yeah, once it's decided.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hope we can get an answer from them very quickly.
Oh, yeah. It should be able to tell us today.
But we're good now with the noticing for, well, as soon as you check with the school or you check with the school. For the gymnasium to get those notices out for the public hearing on the eighth, and we gotta get that notice out the end of this month, right?
Before the end of this.
Before the end of this month, yeah.
So next week we'll post the bond hearing and budget hearing.
And we're still gonna try to do that on one day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, we.
Okay.
I don't think bringing people back and forth for that meeting is worth it.
No, no, we could have the bond and the budget and two separate, I'm just wondering if we can get through it all in one evening. We'll see.
Whatever you, however you want me to do it. You want me to schedule two days?
No. No. No.
All right, so are you gonna check or do you want me to check?
I'll check, yeah, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Soon, soon.
Yeah, great, thanks. Thank you, Patty, for coming. Thank you for your uh input and help and. Coming to closure on this particular issue for this year, and let's see what happens next year.
See what happens next.
That's right. Great, all right, so we do have, I think, uh that was the last public uh item on our agenda. I think we have uh. An item for non-public, so if I can have a motion to go into non-public.
So move.
On favor, I, Sharon, if you let us know.